We're at the seven o'clock meeting. Welcome, everybody, to the official city council meeting for October 6, 2020. This meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few logistics so that we can have a productive meeting, consistent with Governor Enzley's orders. Twenty dash eight point eleven. It is October 2nd, 2020. All public meetings continue to be held remotely. We are following the directions of that order. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for the council to consider. We also will provide two opportunities for the public to provide comment. I am conducting this remotely myself. That physically attending the meeting are City Administrator Katie Onn, City Clerk Ann Swenson, Police Sergeant Aaron Morgan, Finance Director RJ Stevenson, IT Support Todd Henderson. Todd will be managing the Zoom meeting. I will be going over a roll call for the city council in a second here. Also attending remotely is our City Attorney Sean Bouts, Operation Community Director Jennifer Camp, the Relate Library Director Jocelyn Rettel, Lisa Key Director of Planning and Engineering, City Engineer Ben Schmidt, and Streets Lead Stephen Williams. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for the public comments. When that time comes, I will acknowledge public participation for up to three minutes. For the record, please let us know your name, and if you're a City Liberty Lake resident, to participate in Zoom, the public can do so by indicating through the chat feature on the Zoom on the bottom portion of your screen. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until it is time for you to speak. The first item on the agenda is the invocation. Representative Kennedy, do you want to do that for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Dear family and fathers who are gathered here to do the work for our citizens, I pray that you assist us in making logical decisions, taking all the facts into consideration, and be able to move forward. We ask that you bless all the first responders that do so well, do so much for us, including all of our employees. And I would like to ask for a special blessing for all the fathers and mothers that get up every single day, go out there and work for the benefit of their family. A lot of them are going through a lot of struggles now with uncertainty if their business is going to reopen or they're going to have employees who move forward. Your son's precious name, I ask this. Thank you.
Okay, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the next states of America, and to the republic where it stands. All right. I will call this meeting to order. We will have the roll call done at this time. Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Foer. Councilmember Severs.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kurt. Councilmember Comiscus. Councilmember Comiscus.
I think it was earlier that she would be joining us sometime after.
She's on.
No, I'm here. I just was muted. Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry.
Okay, and just to confirm, Sean Bouts, are you on?
I'm here. Thanks.
Okay, and I believe we have excused.
Yes.
Representative Kennedy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Langford contacted me earlier and asked to be excused. They have a medical situation in the family. I make a motion.
Second. It looks like Councilmember Dunn seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, agenda approval. Representative Kennedy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's only one thing I would like to point out is that at the end of our previous meeting, I had been requested to request this meeting to have a workshop on the generator. And since discussion prior to that, it was decided that that could probably be handled in our block, which I think was handled quite well. So for the council members that are wondering why it's not on here, that's why. So I just want to make that notation.
Can we get a motion? Can we get a motion on to approve?
Yes, I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as given to us.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Severs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So this will be the first opportunity for citizen comment. Again, you can utilize your chat feature at the bottom of the screen to notify us that you'd like to make a comment. Or if I can see on the screen, you can also raise your hand. And you can't citizen comments at this time. You'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Ann Swenson, City Clerk, I do have some comments to read into the record.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you again for your phone call last evening. We really appreciated you reaching out and taking time to share our concerns about the city council considering the sale of the twenty plus acres of open space off Liberty Lake Road. My wife's family have lived on Liberty Lake for many years, and we moved here just two years ago and just love the quaint slower pace of Liberty Lake. The lake's golf courses, trails, and open spaces make it so perfect and beautiful. We decided three years ago to purchase a lot on Legacy Ridge just above the twenty plus acres of open space after doing our due diligence, which included the your city manager to confirm the twenty plus acres of open space below us would be kept that way, and we were assured that there would be no plans to change that. We, of course, as well as our neighbors on both sides of Liberty Lake Road, are absolutely against any decisions to even consider selling this open space. We can't even imagine losing all the beautiful pine trees, hawks, deer, and coyotes that live there. Please keep a little open space as parks, trails, and golf courses we have left untouched and preserve the beauty of the city of Liberty Lake. Sincerely, Murray D. Diggs and Vicki Hamdick, 391 South Legend Tree Road Drive, Liberty Lake. The second comment is truly the key. I would like to keep the twenty-three acres on Legacy Ridge and the dogs as a place to walk with family and friends. It's such a beautiful piece of wooded area that many people use. Do we need to decide on this property right now? How many people in our city know about this proposal to sell and maybe build single dwelling homes? I think we should let the people in our city decide. Sincerely, Martha Garrett.
Okay.
Final comment I have here is before the city purchased the property adjacent to Liberty Lake Drive, we seriously considered buying the land. It was listed somewhere in the $300,000 range. The space had been zoned for homes. The development of the property was expensive and difficult. Our purpose was to limit the area to a few homes at the bottom where development was more feasible and preserve the remaining acreage of natural green space and trails. Our primary objective was not to connect to the salt he slept. A friend who knew the city was preparing, a friend who knew the city was preparing to purchase, let us know. So we met with the city manager to discuss the city's plan. And when we were satisfied they were congruous with ours, we opted not to purchase it ourselves. Why tie up our money there when the city was planning to preserve the area as natural green space? We understand that the original agreement in Spokane County required Liberty Lake to have same passes to the salt he slept trail system and that those property owners objected to proposed trail. It is within their right to object, and we are aware some of them have felt harassed and repeated requests for the easements. There seems to be only two options being considered by the city and the property owners. One, keep the land built with connecting trail and be reimbursed by the county. Two, sell the land for development and get it off the city's books. In other words, one group must win and one group must lose. We are asking you to consider a few other options that would involve a compromise. One, keep the land in Liberty Lake's park system with unpaid trails that do not trespass on other properties. Install a small parking area at the bottom like the Flint Beach Trail. Two, sell the land to a developer with the caveat that part must be preserved as natural green space that could be accessed by hikers. Once you sell off the remaining green spaces in Liberty Lake, they can never be reclaimed. You are being trusted to use presence and good judgment. Please consider where our children and grandchildren will swim, hike, and play whenever you are working with developers. There are always options besides, quote, "I win, you lose," end quote. Thank you for considering our request. Dr. Stevens and Julie Craig.
Yes. Any other citizen comments? Not hearing any or seeing any. You will have another opportunity for the later part of the meeting. But at this time, we have a proclamation. Yeah?
Proclamation of City of Liberty Lake, Washington Fire Prevention Reduction Week. Whereas the City of Liberty Lake, Washington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Liberty Lake. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,634 deaths in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 350,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments respond to more than 173,200 annually between 2013 and 2017. And whereas every whereas two of every five home fires started with a addition of 31% of these fires resulting from unintended cooking. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking and being put in a cooking fire. And whereas Liberty Lake's residents should save new kitchen or find food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kids-free zone around cooking areas, and anything that can catch fire away from stove tops. And whereas residents who have plans to practice a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms set the risk design to replore home fires half. And whereas Spokane Valley Fire Department's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries to prevention and protection education. And whereas Liberty Lake's residents are responsive to public education managers and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme serves up fire safety in the kitchen effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when presumed to reduce the risk of kitchen fires.
Therefore, be resolved that the week of October 4th through October 10th, 2020 be designated as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. I urge all people of the City Liberty Lake to check their kitchens for high fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2020 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Spokane Valley Fire Department serving the residents of Liberty Lake. Okay. Proclamation is done. We will now move on to the Mayor and City Council reports and inquiries, as well as to discuss council rules, procedures, with reference to Section 4.1 Order of Business. So I will start out with the, any city council members. If I can get my screen opened up. Any council reports? Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, it's Dan. Yeah, I wanted to quickly reflect on an action taken this past week. A project, a tree removal project on Mission Avenue undertaken by the Meadowood Homeowners Association. It was related to removing trees that are potentially hazards to the overhead utilities. I was concerned, I guess, in that as a resident, I hadn't necessarily, and a member of that association, hadn't necessarily gotten a good word about what that plan was. The president of the association had tried to make that clear evidence to members through the website and other effects. But I just had a couple of learning points in understanding how that project transpired. This was, I'll refer to a clear cut. That was the removal of trees in a pretty, I would say, straight-through way. And I tried to test quickly if there was anything in permitting or other in our city code right now, which would preclude someone from on any piece of property, simply removing all the trees. The quickest answer is no. That any private property owner in the city reasonably without, I would say, significant permitting activity could foreseeably remove all trees on their private property. And I guess I just reflect on that briefly as something to think about as a tree city and as a city that reflects on in its comp plan objectives regarding trees and respect. So I'm not advocating for immediate action, but I just thought that was an interesting turn. I would bring forward that Lisa was able to quickly identify, however, at least one kind of tree removal-related action in which we do through ordinance recognize references heritage trees. Then 12 inches in diameter, four feet above the ground requires other actions. So just that was one thing I wanted to reflect on is change within our city. That project, by the way, got put on hold for some procedural reasons within that Meadowood HOA. But yeah, just you know, the wholesale removal of trees from our greater environment doesn't have any, I would say, material permitting actions required on the part of the city. So that's it.
Representative Comiscus.
Yeah, just a clarification. If I, if I understand correctly, those trees are going to be replaced by other species in other locations more suited to be around power lines, so it's not to interfere, correct?
This is Dan. I'll vouch for my knowledge of the project. The HOA is reporting they will be replaced. One quick suggestion I had related to that is perhaps then such a replacement could be done in phased approach to perhaps mitigate the effects of the removal. But I'll watch that HOA and ensure that they are consulting with their Architectural Review Committee for the completion of that project.
That would be great. Representative Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Dan. Good to be, you brought that up. We live in the, that HOA, and the information was sent to us as that those trees are being replaced by Avista, and they are standing at the expense for all of that. But it was also my understanding, maybe Lisa or somebody can verify this, that the HOA and Avista had worked with the city in this, this project. Is that correct?
Um, Mayor Pro Tem, that is, oh, I'm muted.
No.
We hear you.
Now we can't.
Now we can't. We heard you before.
Let's try that again. So, so we were contacted by Avista and the HOA. We determined that, that the trees were not within the city right of way, that they were actually, they were actually on HOA property. The HOA coordinated with Avista and negotiated with Avista. And it was, and so it was really not our, our decision. They were not street trees, per se. There's trees on private property. So it was really the HOA's situation.
Thank you, Lisa.
Their council reports. Representative Kennedy.
I have one that over some, the last couple of weeks that both the mayor and myself attended a the mayor's, the mayor pro tems and stuff throughout the state of Washington. As everybody probably recalls, we have, I think, 281 cities. It was, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had 70 or 71 cities represented there. And it really was an outstanding meeting. It really, really was. But one thing that became very clear, which is interesting and surprising to me, and also Mayor and I talked about this, that they did a questionnaire of things that the council can do, the mayor can do, and things that could be done. And they asked us to answer that. The surprising thing is a lot of these common sense things, you would think that you'd get 100% response of correct, was anywhere between 20% were incorrect. Showing that a lot of mayors and council members, Mayor Pro Tems, are not really familiar with what the responsibilities are of both offices. So that was kind of an eye-opener, but overall, I thought it was outstanding. Do you have any comment on that, Mayor?
Yeah, I think that it was very intriguing to hear how other cities were responding to COVID. Some were still trying to figure out how to utilize CARES dollars, hearing some of the challenges that the other cities are facing in this time. You know, I think we've talked about it before, but we are very fortunate and blessed as a city to not only have had a great response in relation to COVID to support our citizens and local businesses, but the level of support from within the community itself. People stepping up like never before was really outstanding. So I'm really proud of what our city has been able to, to do during all this turmoil, if you will. Representative Kennedy.
Thank you. I'd like to also add is that they had a gentleman whose name is slipping right now, but he was on our list of six possibilities to have our retreat on what we're looking forward to do with Ann McFarland. And his presentation, which took about an hour, was absolutely outstanding. It really hit the points and was really very, very good. So I'm really hopeful that when we meet with Ann McFarland and we have that same type of result. So it was very good. AWC does an excellent job of assisting us as elected officials. Thank you.
Any other council reports? I do know we have a report from Parks and Art. Dana.
Yeah, thanks. So the Parks and Arts Commission is meeting remotely once per month right now. We have a few projects we're working on right now. We're trying to get the historical information for the Pavilion Park mural put on the city website, as well as getting a physical kiosk at the park that gives kind of a historical background of the park and the carousel. We're hoping to get a sponsorship for that. And we're working on the North Net and Apple Way Utility Box Wrap. We have picked the artwork for that and are working on getting it approved by STCU. They are sponsoring it again and hoping to get it installed within the next month. And then we just finished our budget for the next year and just kind of prioritizing what projects we're working on. Story Walk project is on a bit of a hold because Spokane Valley Tech is not meeting in person. They're virtual right now. So they are looking at getting us a quote for having an outside company do those story stands, but that will be significantly higher. So we may, depending on what that comes back, postpone it until they can meet in person and, and complete the project themselves. We're also looking at doing a COVID-19 art project, kind of a way to give the community the opportunity to through art, you know, give a little bit of a history for Liberty Lake and what we've gone through this past year. We're not sure exactly what type of medium it will be. We are gonna make a special meeting and kind of talk about options. And we're also looking at potentially doing some enhancements to the Pavilion Park mural, either extending along that far wall or doing some prep to the ground, the concrete down there. So potentially, we can do a chalk event every year. The chalk walk, the surface wasn't great for doing the actual art. So we've talked about what we could do to have a space where we could have something every year. A suitable surface. Anyone have any questions?
Representative Kennedy.
I didn't answer much of your question, but a comment is that I really support the idea of taking that mural and extend it around the corner there. That mural is absolutely first class. We live close to the park. We're able to get over there a lot. Our one-year-old granddaughter is over there a lot, and we're over there with her looking. And the thing I find interesting is that because of the art, I don't care where you are, you can see it. You will see individuals who will walk up and stand. Prior to that, they would only come up to use the facility, walk out and leave. But I, we really noticed that. We have some friends that live directly across from the park, and they can actually see that area. They had brought up also how they see foot traffic, in their opinion, has increased. And they feel it has a lot to do with the mural, because people bring people there to say, oh, look at this, look at that. That is an excellent project.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel? Councilmember Kurtz?
Not a question, but I just, I really appreciate the art wraps. I notice them, and the kids notice them. I mean, I think they're a really nice addition to the community. In addition to everything else that you guys are doing, I think that the contribution is noticed. So thank you.
Great. The one we're doing this time is probably gonna be my favorite. So I'm excited for you guys to see it.
Councilmember Dunn, I saw your hand.
Um, I've got just one other observation unrelated. Mike, if you have something related, please go ahead.
No, no, I, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I just have one other anecdote, a personal observation. It relates to land use. I had a chance over the weekend to visit my homeland, I'll call it, Southeast, Southeast King County Renton, and I had a chance to stay, stay along the lakeshore there. The Gene Coulon Park is an epic public facility there in the city of Renton that joins the lakeshore between the Boeing Renton Plant and the Cannondale Hilton North. It's a park I remember as a kid greatly. As I walked along that park, I looked out onto the lakeshore, Lake Washington to the south. And I'm gonna say the land use of that has changed in 30 years' time in ways I could never have imagined. 30 years ago, I could never imagine a 12-story Hyatt Regency Hotel right there on the lakeshore, Lake Washington, between the Boeing plant and this park. I could not have imagined three 11-story office towers immediately adjoining that property, nor the mixed-use retail project behind it as the landing. And, and my observation is just this, that when you put the context of planning into that 30-year event horizon, there are some things which can happen, honestly, that you could never imagine. And not that they're bad either. I would have been averse and incredibly shocked to think of that as the potential use of that land 30 years ago. But how that works for that community and in that day, today. Yeah. That was just a personal anecdote for my experience. Thanks.
Okay. Any other council questions or comments for Parks and Art? I also want to recognize all of your guys' efforts in the Parks and Art. And thank you for the time that you guys give to the community and volunteering your hours. And I know that time is precious and I really wanna recognize all our volunteers in our committee who make every effort to help make our community a success. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, from my report's perspective, I received a a thank you card from the Liberty Lake Winery. They were very grateful for the tents. And as were quite a few other businesses in our community and how it's going to enable them the ability to extend their outdoor seating timeframe. So they were very grateful for that. I also want to take a second. I know during this time that people can be very, very passionate, one way or the other, about COVID. We had a We had a few citizens that were somewhat verbally attacked for wearing masks while they were out and about. And I want to reinforce that we need to really cut each other a break. And regardless of your belief system on masks or no masks, we really need to respect one another, and we don't condone any type of hateful acts of any kind to anyone in our community. We're all in this together, and I can't reinforce that enough. I also want to acknowledge the passing of one of our residents, Dick Canfield. He's a, him and his wife are amazing individuals that have contributed greatly to this community. A sad loss for many. I know that Tom and myself had to enjoy many conversations with Dick on the porch, just hanging out with him, discussing a lot of life in general. And he definitely left his fingerprint on his community, and he'll be greatly missed. Also wanted to recognize the Hub and the drive-in theater style of events they're having. So thank you, Phil, at the Hub for everything that you guys are doing to keep our community entertained on some level during all this. So I think that is all I have. Any other comments from council? Councilmember Krasikus?
Hi. Apologize, Katie, if this is in the upcoming report. I was a little overwhelmed at work today. I saw the news conference today, at least a snippet of it, with regards to staging. Are you guys going to talk about that in the City Administrator Report from Governor Enslie and the restrictions?
Yes, I'll give it our thing. We did just receive it. Actually, Janet Johnson are reviewing it as we speak. So we'll touch on some of these pieces of it. We still need to do a little bit more research, but we'll touch on that.
Okay, thanks.
I did also want to let the council know that we have some amazing applicants for the lateral position for police officer, which is great, one of our biggest trans ever for applicants for a lateral position. And we also received some very excellent applications for the chief of police. We got up to twelve applications. It was a lot more than we thought we'd even get. So it's a great thing to see so many individuals that would like to serve our community. Makes our decision that much tougher, but happy to see such a great turnout for that. So we will be having a open house on, sorry, Katie, if I'm stealing any of your thunder, October 21st, and we'll get the dates out and times officially. But October 21st, we will do kind of a meet and greet for citizens and staff and council members to meet those top candidates once they're officially selected. The 22nd of October, we will have interview panels. And then October 23rd, myself, Katie, RJ, and Chief will do the interviews. So that is where that is at. So we'll move on to City Administrator Report.
Mr. Mayor, we still have one other item.
Oh, yes, sorry. Discussion of the Rules and Consequences, Section 4.1. My apologies.
No, not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I see this as just a really simple housekeeping. I don't think it's going to take very much discussion on this. When we look at our Resolution 12, which we're going to get into this as time goes on, even after meeting with Ann McFarland to either update some of these. We already have on here one item that I'm proposing we add permanently to our council agenda. And it's on Page Six, specifically under Workshop Discussion. It is set up to have a workshop discussion in the seven o'clock timeframe. And where it would go is probably right after Number Eight of the City Council Reports. This would be utilized for, I'm sorry, what? There was no comment? Okay. Where I see that being utilized is it's this place where council, we can put specific things that the council wants to talk about, regulations, something that's on this list of twenty-one, twenty-four items that the council wants to discuss can be put there, and we will know in advance what's coming up. I think it'd be an appropriate thing. It really is. It's not something we're voting on because we already have it in there. It's just something that's going to be added. I recommend we add it to our agenda. It is no different than having citizen comments. When I had a conversation with Katie, we talked about that. And it's, there'd be times that we probably won't have anything on that. But there are also times we'd have no citizen comments, but it is permanently on our agenda.
Yeah, I think it'll be important that if there are topics of conversation that you guys want to put a placeholder for very specific things where you feel like you want to take action, that we want to be as specific as possible so our citizens have the opportunity to understand that there are actions that might be taken on specific topics so they have the opportunity to attend that meeting and give comments.
Well, that's all I have on that. I'd certainly like to hear from the council.
Councilmember Dan?
So, Mike, as a clarification, are you suggesting that we should have a top, an agenda topic called Workshop Discussion and not have any specific topics identified in the published agenda sent on Fridays?
No, it would have anything that's on there. Let's say, let's say as a council member or councilman done yourself, if you want to talk about a specific subject, you can request that to be put on the agenda, and it could go under that slot.
Okay. I feel like that is actually what would occur today. If I wanted to arrange at our next council meeting a specific discussion item, I'd reach staff prior to the agenda being published, in which the item would be inserted as Workshop Discussion.
Right.
So I'm wondering what's different.
If I can respond to that?
Go ahead.
I use myself for example. Over the last two meetings or three meetings, at the, in our seven o'clock meeting, I requested things to be added to our next agenda. And then when the agenda comes out, they're not on there. So in meeting with Katie, we have to go back and forth, what was it, actually mention the agenda? Are we going to put it on the agenda? And it always gets putting back, put back on there, but it has added a lot of confusion between staff and I think a council member requesting that. To me, it'd just be clarification that that is where it's going to go to let the public know what we're going to be discussing.
I saw Councilmember Krasikus' hand.
Yeah, I concur with Dan. I don't see how that, you know, either way, how that's any different what we're currently doing. If we need, if we have, need to workshop on something, it goes on the agenda. If we don't need one, it doesn't go on the agenda. And, you know, if there is something that's going to go, going to a workshop, it has to be on there when the initial agenda is published and not added after the fact or during a meeting.
Councilmember Fuller, I saw your hand as well.
Yeah, I'll just use tonight as an example. I don't know that I would call it a workshop discussion. I would call it a general council discussion as an agenda item. And example, we had a discussion at our earlier meeting regarding a motion that I'm going to bring forward. This would be a great time to pull anything from the six o'clock meeting to the official agenda at seven o'clock.
Councilmember Krasikus?
Yeah, my only, and I apologize again, work issues. I was not able to attend the workshop today. But as we've seen already, the topic of the Twenty-three Acres came up during a meeting. We weren't planning on talking about it. We did. We made a motion on something. And now, rightly so, you know, some of the residents are upset that they didn't have a chance to sit in on that conversation. So I personally have a little heartburn with adding something to the agenda the same evening as something that happened during the workshop. I don't think that gives our residents enough notice to reply or submit comments.
Councilmember Dan?
I'd echo Chris's concerns and voice that it works against what I refer to as transparency. I would rather ensure that, you know, in a public meeting, in a public discussion, and especially with a vote of the council, people have the chance to understand specifically what is being addressed.
Okay.
So, okay, so I just have to ask. So with that, then I have to request that I be able to make a motion at our next meeting regarding what we talked about at the six o'clock meeting?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Councilmember Fuller. From the standpoint of talking about something between six and seven, can you clarify what you're asking?
So we can take action on a discussion we had, and it's a very simple discussion. So we can take action on something we discussed at the six o'clock meeting in our official seven o'clock meeting. The direction has been give the motion at the seven o'clock meeting during some timeframe in the agenda. It's a very simple motion. Nothing too over the top, I don't think. But if what we just said was, we don't want to have anything on the agenda without prior notification, then tonight's discussion from the six o'clock meeting has to wait until next, our next meeting?
Well, I guess it depends on the topic. If you had something at six o'clock that you were discussing, and you felt after that discussion it was something that you'd want to discuss at seven, I would recommend that it would be on the agenda, not something that you have at six. Then amend the agenda after the six o'clock meeting and then vote on it. If you look under 4.2 of the rules, it talks about the council's right to amend the agenda, but that you won't vote on something that's not on the agenda unless it's an emergency. So, you know, consistent with that and consistent with wanting to make sure that you give notice to the public if there's something that would want to take comment or have the opportunity to speak, I wouldn't recommend that unless you had something that you thought maybe at six and was going to be potentially voted on to identify it at seven. If you didn't take action at seven, then so be it. But I wouldn't recommend moving something forward to the seven o'clock and take action if there's not an opportunity for the public and/or it wasn't identified on the agenda pursuant to 4.2.
Mayor Protem Candy?
Yes, I believe we're off the subject what I was talking on, but I would like to address what Councilman Fuller is bringing up. At the six o'clock, my memory is, it was being discussed, is what would be the recommendation to Lisa on how they move forward. The question was, can we decide that now, or do we need to add it to the seven o'clock meeting? Am I wrong, Councilman Fuller?
So you're just asking us whether to give direction to the staff?
That's what the question was, my understanding, at the six o'clock.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, if you're, if, because from that standpoint, you're not necessarily taking legislative action like 4.2 talks about. You're just making a motion to say the council would like staff to go a particular direction to handle a particular item or more research or more information back to the council. And I think in those situations, sometimes there's a distinction between a motion and direction. Not every single circumstance may need a motion from the council, depending on what the dialogue is. You know, there may be understanding that more information is necessary, and the staff can understand that. There's other times that the staff may be looking for a specific direction and maybe wants a motion relative to whether or not they're supposed to provide information. So I think it may vary depending on the circumstances. But, Phil, if the, the comment is you have something at six o'clock and you want to have something done or some more information relative to giving direction to staff, I don't see that as an issue. No.
You don't see that as an issue at the six o'clock or the seven o'clock?
No. If you're, if you're just having a discussion about, let's say you're talking about roads, and you're having a workshop about roads, and then at seven o'clock, you want to have more information that comes up during the meeting, either six or seven, and you're asking staff for further direction. If there's a consensus amongst the council that the staff needs to provide additional information, I don't, I don't think that's a problem. If you want to make a motion to say, can you provide us X, Y, Z information for our informational purposes or for a later council meeting? I don't see that as a problem. You're not, you're not passing an ordinance or passing a contract or approving resolutions or things of that nature that are more of a legislative function as opposed to direction of staff. So if you want to take it that route, I don't see an issue with that.
Perfect. Councilmember Dan? You're on mute. Councilmember Dan?
Thank you for the clarification, Sean. To extend your analogy, if at a six o'clock hour the staff briefed us on roads and leveled a bid offered by a contractor to a half million dollars to perform this work, can we take a vote at the seven o'clock hours to go say spend and buy that work?
Not unless it's on the agenda for seven o'clock.
Okay, but that's the direction of staff. Come on, you can go both ways.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So let's just use, let's just talk instead of hypotheticals. At our six o'clock meeting, we talked about approving, spending some money to redo the rooftop units on the police department and reviewing the lighting in that building. And so badly wanted to just make a motion right then and there and say, yes, let's do it. We've been talking about it. The numbers are good. We're under budget. But according to interpretation of Resolution 12, we have to wait until the seven o'clock meeting. But you just said, no, we can give staff direction, but if it has, if it's related to a dollar amount, then we can't give staff direction. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're talking about something about approving, you know, spending funds for the generator or the police department or something like that, and it's not on the seven o'clock agenda already, I would say wait until the next meeting.
And I'm going to need a place to be able to make a request for an agenda item.
Well, a council member can make a request to place something on in a future agenda. So that's just a question of notifying the mayor or Katie.
All right.
If I could offer something real quick, it is confusing, Councilmember Fuller. And I understand kind of the complexity and also the extra time it seems to take for us to be responsive to the actions the council wants to pursue. This is a really good conversation with Ann McFarland because she's going to help, be able to help us define how these conversations and decisions the council makes can move forward. It's just, I think, and there's no black and white, but I'll take a chance of describing it this way. When you, when you make a decision to go in a general direction, you can, I think we can get a consensus from the council that you want to move forward with us executing a contract to replace the rooftop unit. If Ben has a contract ready to be awarded, then it's better to put that on the agenda. The council approves that contract. If I don't have a contract, it's hypothetical, and we're using numbers that we may not have confirmed yet. So I think general direction, this is just that one example, giving us general direction, yes, we want to move forward with purchasing rooftop units and installing them. Then we will take that direction, bring it back so you can approve it at the next council meeting. If it's an emergency, we can move forward. But if it's not an emergency, it really needs to be on the agenda. So we can take directions, but I think it's just hard for us to execute contracts and policy without complete, we used to call it complete staff work. So you're actually approving the work that staff has presented you. I don't know if that helps or not, but I think perhaps with Ann McFarland, it would, she'll be able to add more clarity.
Good. Thank you. Mayor Protem Candy?
May I be allowed to get back on the subject that we were talking about? I chose not to bring up a point of order. We were talking about specifically City Council Rules and We were talking about specifically city council rules and procedures, section 4.1, and suddenly we went down another rabbit path, which took us eight minutes. The reason why I chose not to bring us back to 4.1 is that this is a prime example why we need to put this on our agenda. Because it is so often we have a specific thing we're going to talk about and we get off the subject on other things that just takes us away from what we're trying to get accomplished. I'm not, I can't believe I said that we shouldn't be able to get through this quickly because obviously it's not happening. What's being requested is that what the ordinance, Resolution 12, already says that this can be, we've already approved this to be on the agenda. And the only request is that it's kept on there permanently, no different than call to order, pledge of allegiance, innovation, agenda approval, citizen comments. It's no different. It doesn't mean that it's going to be utilized each time, but that is a spot where the council can say, okay, in the future, I would like to bring the subject up. And the example is Katie and I and Ann, between the three of us, the amount of time we took and also wasted trying to come up, where were we going to put this discussion we're talking about right now? Because we spent so much time going, well, where should it be? Where should it go? Should it be line item nine? Should it be 10? Should it be five? And finally, I got an email back that said, well, we'll put it on number eight. So if we get so far off the trail on our subjects, having something we've already approved, this is not something we're trying to invent again. We've already had this discussion and there was a purpose why it was there. The logical thing is, is to add it to our agenda because we already have it approved for our agenda. And specific things can be put there. Now, I understand where the council members coming from. Well, any council member can bring up a subject. And the challenge has been, when it does come up, where does it go? Where does it go? So once again, I'm not asking for a vote to change something. I'm asking for not even a vote, but a conclusion of common sense that we already have this on Resolution 12. Let's just add what we've already decided can and should be there. Thank you.
I think this also, to Katie's point, reinforces the importance of having that training that we have set up for our council meeting. Councilor Dan?
Just to logically extend the perception, Mike, as an analogy, tonight on our agenda, are there, there are no resolutions, but is it important that we would have an item on our agenda called resolutions?
Dan, I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to go there because I don't think it's advantageous with something like that.
He's making a valid.
He's making a valid point, but we're getting into another rabbit hole. This is simply something that's being asked to be put on there so we can prevent what I go through the last several weeks being Mayor Protem of trying to get something on the agenda. And if there was a spot for it, then it becomes very simple. If any council member wants to bring something up and you want to talk about, again, the lime scooters and stuff, this is where it goes. This is where it goes.
Councilor Kamiskas?
So if there is something that needs to go on a workshop, we put it on. As Dan said, same thing we do with resolutions or ordinances. If we don't have a resolution or an ordinance to discuss that night, there's not an item for it on the agenda. So why wouldn't it be the same with workshops? If we don't have anything for workshop, then don't put a number on the agenda.
Okay, can I respond to that? If we don't have anything, if we don't have anybody signed up for citizen comments, do we take that off?
Because we don't know what the outcome of that is. We don't know who's going to show up. If we have a workshop item, it needs to be noticed prior to the meeting so our citizens know what we're discussing. Just like resolutions and ordinances.
Right, and I believe on Resolution, Resolution 12, that's why that was put in there. That's why that was put in there. So.
And you're, you're, you're still not addressing that, what, what is the difference between resolutions, ordinances, and even, and even if the administrator report, what if there isn't one? We won't put it on the agenda. Same with workshops, same with resolutions, same with any number on here.
Curtis?
I'm wondering if maybe to kind of split the difference, could we, when we added the, or adjusted the mayor and city council reports and inquiries, can we also just, and agenda items, put something in there with a name after it, so there's not this heartache over an additional section that may or may not have something. We're always going to solicit for city council member reports and inquiries. Can we also just have that be a spot for agenda items and the name of the person behind them? If we're looking for a spot.
Well, I think that would, I don't have the resolution, the ordinance in front of me, but I believe that would take a, a change to the entire ordinance at one time, and we can, and we are going to be going through that ordinance later, so Councilwoman Curtis is something to keep in mind. But with regards to what the ask is tonight, you know, I also point out executive session. There's a spot for that if we need to have one, but if we don't need to have one, it doesn't show up as executive session, not applicable.
These are all great comments and questions that we need to bring up when we have our workshop with Ann. Any other comments? All right, city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a council, kind of a long report tonight, but we'll move fairly quickly. Before we start though, I do want to mention October 27th from 6:00 to 8:30, a Zoom meeting with Ann McFarland and our council. It is a public meeting and we're going to talk about the role, clarity of roles and procedures. So there is a pre-meeting that Mayor Protem and Mayor Rittner are going to have with myself and Ann next week to prepare for that, that workshop. So on that note, very quickly, I was going to touch on a few of the agenda items. I'm going to go through the general business items and just touch on those very quickly. One is to approve an agreement with Ann McFarland for online training workshop for elected officials. She is offering to sell us a book. I believe it's $10 plus shipping and handling. If you would like, I would place those orders for all of you so that when we, and have them delivered to City Hall, we'll put them in your mailbox. Also, that's not included in her fee. That's an additional expenditure, so we'll move forward with that purchase. The other thing I was going to mention is that we are, and we are identified to receive an additional $165,000. That brings the total amount up to $495 for CARES Act relief. There's a budget amendment and there's also an agreement that you would approve with the Department of Commerce. I'll go very quickly. We have a donation of a flag. We have donation of some energy drinks to our police department. We have a contract to move striping on Knox Avenue. We have a task order for design services of an intersection signal for the new high school at Ridgeline. We have an agreement, excuse me, we have a task order for the design services of a traffic signal at Legacy Ridge, and then we have a contract to award a traffic signal construction at Ridgeline. We have the TIV Board Consultants, this will provide construction administration for the Ridgeline signal. That's a task order with our home hall engineer. We have a six-month extension with Plunkett lease agreement, no change in conditions or fees. DI snow services, $40,000 not to exceed, $20,000 not to exceed for purchase of salt, and then finally, $12,826 to purchase a tap for water and sewer service as well as capital fees at our public works yard. So that's what's on the agenda tonight for your consideration. Are there any questions on those items? I do have a number of people that are going to give you updates throughout the media, or throughout my reports that I will move along to if you don't have any specific questions. Okay, the snow update, Stephen is online and he's.
Katie, hang on. Katie.
I'm sorry.
Councilor Kamiskas?
Yeah, just, I just, I've got a question on some of the figures in one of the items. I can hold that till we get to the discussion if you'd like.
Which, which item, Councilmember Kamiskas?
Let me go back, hold on. I worked some paper here. 10B6, the, sort of the backup we got, there's a, I lost my calculator, hold on where to go. $2,815 difference in a couple of the attachments that went with that, so if you want to get into the details, when we get to that item, that's fine.
Okay, and I think that's something that Ben Schmidt was working on, our city engineer, so when he gives us an update on Harvard and Henry, I'll have him touch on those figures as well.
Thanks.
Okay, so now Stephen is going to give us an update on our preparation for snow removal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you guys all hear me well?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to give you guys a quick update and kind of a rundown of what we've been doing and prepping for snow. Unfortunately, I've got to say that nasty four-letter word when we've been having 80 degrees here. So on your agenda tonight, you'll see we've got the approval, asking for approval for sand or salt and DI's product. You know, it's a little different than my prior years. There's a new product I would like to try this year and see how well it works. I do plan wise. The new product, I mean, they can cut my application rates down by 30%, and if that's the case, this will end up being cheaper, even though the product is a little more expensive. So that's something that we're going to do. City Street Crew is working on a sand or salt pad out at the Public Works Yard for salt storage. Our sand salt spreader was supposed to have shipped Monday. I'm waiting on confirmation from my vendor to make sure it did ship. Once that gets in, it's getting shipped to Freightliner. They're going to put it together. We'll take our truck down and get it all installed and we'll be ready for winter. There is a little bit of a priority difference between streets and trails. Trails plow at any measurable amount, and as you guys know, streets plows between two inches for collectors and arterials and then at four inches for residential. We do have at times where we have to go back to our collectors and arterials if we do get more than the two inches, even though we're all in residential, so it's kind of a juggle to go back and forth if we need to. Communication wise, we're going to continue with notify me, Facebook, and our website. Our budgets are looking good. We've only used about 26% right now of our supplies and professional services. We've only used 16% as of year to date. I am working on contracts for snow relief drivers. I've reached out to a couple of vendors. I have one vendor that is willing to help us out. I'm going to do a second vendor this year. That is due to COVID. So that way, if anything happens and we have to isolate crews, we should have plenty of guys for relief. I'm also working with Western State's CAT to work on new leases for our equipment. Our lease has come up next year to turn in, so I will be bringing those in a future county for you guys. And that is about all I have right now. Do you guys have any questions?
So Stephen, just so you know, I think your internet is probably causing a little bit of voice challenges, but certainly the council has any questions, I'll, we'll do our best, Dan, get those answered.
Councilor Dan?
Hey, I'm just really grateful, Stephen, for your proactive approach on drivers. Just another stroke of excellence in your current plan for our city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, moving along, our next update is going to be on a flag donation made to our police department by a local resident, and Darren is going to give us an update.
Mayor, city council, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Outstanding. So the flag was donated to Liberty Lake Police Department by one of our residents, D.J. Garcia, and in order to show his support for our department. Since the council decided to accept that donation, our attention for the flag is to be put into a glass case and displayed on the wall for everyone in the city in the front lobby, as you can see by the picture here. The flag represents the value of the department, and we appreciate this generous donation. She provides two flags for our department, and one is a gift from Chief Asment to recognize his service to our community prior to and later. And I took this little excerpt out of D.J.'s donation letter, and I'd like to share it with you. The flags were designed in half, in support and in concert with Chief Asment of the police department, and a way to demonstrate the unwavering pride, commitment, and dedication of the men and women who showed immeasurable courage in and out of uniform. The flags were designed and customized in concert with the symbols of the department bearing the 2001 Police Department emblem. They include the department's model of integrity, excellence, and service before self, and combine the elements of three core for the unwavering commitment to the responsibilities and trust that's unto them by the entire community. Her gracious donation shows a great level of trust within the community member, as a community member, and represents the true meaning, in my belief, of community-oriented policing. And I believe D.J. is also online if she would like to share anything additional.
DG?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd just like to say something briefly. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I wrote it so I won't get emotional, but I can read it very clearly. It's not often that I find myself searching for words to underscore a message. However, I considered what was to be the best way to convey this message of hope for my community during these times of unrest. I am honored to have a relationship with our law enforcement department, as so many of us do. However, I know two things to be true. Firstly, I am one of the faces of Black Lives Matter. Not the movement and not the protest, but an image of the person. Similarly, our dedicated Liberty Lake Police Department is the face of law and order. It is not the face of those who would exert power or violate one's right to justice. However, both the department and persons of color are innocent symbols of the times, and that is why this donation was so important. This donation is given as a symbol of support for our local police department and its pledge to this diverse community's safety and security. While it is not always easy to find the balance in many cities, I will use the words illustrated on the flag that serve to outline what is tantamount in ensuring a cohesive community. Duty, honor, community, and the message echoed in their motto, integrity, courage, excellence, strength, and service before self, as proof of our combined pledge that together, everything is possible. It is my honor to present this to the police department as I am honored that they serve me and they serve the rest of our community with pride and dignity, and that we stand as a model for so many communities that have not been able to see the calm and peace that we share in Liberty Lake today. I'm proud to be a part of that model, and I thank you for accepting hopefully this donation.
Thank you, DG. It's greatly appreciated when any citizen acknowledges and supports our police department, and we're grateful for that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Hey, Ben, our city engineer is going to give us an update on Harvard and Henry Road, as well as hopefully answer Chris's, Chris's question related to the cost estimate, figures that were proposed.
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, so the Harvard Road project is actually going to start October 19th is what it's slated for. So we had our pre-construction meeting and it went really well. And the plan is, as far as impacts to citizenry and, and operations, is that we will do most of the work around the bridge structure in I-90 during the winter, and then once we get a weather window in the spring, the, we'll start doing the deck work and doing lane shifts. So you'll start to see impacts to travel in the springtime when they're doing more work on the deck, but otherwise you'll just see construction crews in and around. But otherwise, you'll just see construction crews in and around the bridge during the winter doing the, the support structure work. And then for the Henry Road project, we're still, uh, working through some budget issues to get it back down to, uh, the original proposal. But there's lots of innovative solutions that are happening, and it seems like every day there's, uh, something new that we need to figure out. But we've got a good team and we're still working through that to hit our deadlines and to still stay within budget. And, and then may I answer some questions on the, the other items?
Um, yeah, Ben, I had had a couple, just one question on some, on the figures in one of the, uh, the agenda items. But I think maybe the more appropriate time is during discussion for that. If that's okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, so now an update from RJ on budget and finance.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, yesterday I did, I sent out the September dashboard, um, just some key items to, uh, note in there. Um, our year-to-date sales tax, um, is still, uh, doing greatly over expectations. Uh, we collected about $423,000 in sales tax compared to last year in September. That number was 323, so about $100,000 more than what 19 was, which was an extraordinary year. Um, and in this month as well, the high school, while still had an impact, did not have a significant, um, impact in that. But that is really commanding for a lot of construction. Online, uh, sales, um, are a large store here. So with the graph, our dashboard, I did include the, um, sales tax graphs, so you can see, um, what the different categories and how they're performing. This does, uh, as we're getting closer to the end of year, and now that we're 75% of the way through, it does seem that, um, with the, uh, reduction that we made, uh, when we started, COVID in this, we were, we were actually forecasting close to three-quarter million dollars worth of loss from, or decrease in revenue. And so we decreased our expenses at that time. Uh, just so you know, year to date, um, on the expenditure side, we're about $400,000, um, I believe, less than we were at the time last year, so the, the, uh, the changes that we made, um, at the beginning back in, and spring, our, our dollar coming to full effect. Um, by that time, we also had a, a really few of revenues. So, uh, we're definitely, by the way, we have surpluses here, and that would be something to consider, what, what that money, um, what our plans should be for that surplus going into future years. With that, uh, just so just high love, any questions that anyone has with the dashboard? Um, as we, uh, Katie mentioned, we've got the COVID degree card agreement with Commerce, um, uh, coming forward, uh, tonight to give us about a half a million dollars worth of CARE Act dollars. Katie, do you think that, uh?
I'll touch on it.
Um, so that is, uh, so looking forward to next year, as we're looking at the budget and what we're, uh, what we see the state, uh, reporting is, is that their, their revenues are looking better than what they had originally projecting back in June. Uh, but they're still looking at a significant revenue downfall, and we're seeing some of the other cities are also projecting that as well. So, uh, and we're still wanting to be cautious of what 2021 looks like. Um, so as we're budgeting that way, we're looking at, uh, if we have, uh, if there are some economic stress, that we'll be ready for it again for 2021. Um, any questions, financially, that's my update. Um, I did have one other thing to share. Um, the salary commission did meet today. Um, I don't have any minute notes from them, but we did just, we did, uh, there, 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 we've been trying to meet for a few months now. Actually, we were discussing back in March, but with COVID happened. Um, but we discussed today, uh, I shared with them this dashboard report with them, where we're at revenue-wise. They don't understand it, or we're doing, uh, how the city is doing. Uh, we also looked at the market data, so they had some key cities that they looked at, uh, when they were doing their, uh, analysis last time. Um, and so they, they felt that most cities that we're benchmarking with did not have any, uh, significant changes. For that point, um, they're also looking to see how things pan out for next year, so they're not recommending any kind of, uh, increases at this point. They want to see how, um, 2021 passes out and get to a, uh, more stable year, so.
Um, before we move on to Jocelyn for the library, I do want to mention that the mayor's budget comes out October 20th, and so, um, we'll have a lot of information for all of you. I, it can be overwhelming, but, um, really excited to, to share that with you and the community. Um, the question we have is to think about if you want a budget workshop, um, the date that Mayor Procham, Kennedy and I discussed was potentially, let me look at my notes here, um, November 3rd or November 10th, excuse me, November 3rd is the council meeting. Um, so we were thinking of a budget workshop on November 10th at 7:00 PM. That is, uh, a day before Veterans Day, um, and so that's just something to consider.
Your project, Kenny.
Yeah, just for clarification there, if I, I don't know if I misheard you or not. What we discussed was, recommendation was, is to have a budget discussion at our 6:00 PM meeting on the 3rd, and then a budget workshop recommendation for November 10th. The idea. The idea.
I'm interested.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're absolutely correct. So what we're proposing is, in the, in the, on November 3rd, the 6:00 PM workshop, before the council meeting, um, have a workshop on the budget, and then have a November 10th meeting, where the only, it's a special meeting, it's an off, new date, and we would, um, have just the budget on that agenda. Is that correct?
Yes. And I might add is that where this discussion led from, we're starting and looking for a direction from the council, is that we're getting the budget to us on October 20th, gives us a period of time to look at it. First time we're going to see it at a council meeting is on the 3rd. So it was felt if we have it at the 6 o'clock workshop, then a week later, if we want to have that meeting on the 10th, it was probably weak for council to be able to come up with questions, concerns, as we move forward on the budget.
Mayor, or Councilmember Sawyer?
Yeah, I don't mind working, shoot. Get after it. But does everybody realize that puts us six Tuesdays in a row? We're meeting on the 20th, we have a special workshop on the 27th, we're meeting on the 3rd, and then if you propose to meet on the 10th, then we're meeting on the 17th again. Hey, I don't mind working.
What we signed up for, right?
As long as everybody else is cool, I'm good.
No objection.
Councilmember Kamiskas.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Um, Katie, you said that the mayor's budget's coming out on 10/20, so that's when we'll get our copy, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood you, something you said about the 3rd, thank you.
Yeah, we'll put hard copies in your mailboxes right around, uh, on the, on the October 20th. I'm looking at RJ, when do you think the hard copies will be ready?
Not later than October 20th. If it's possible, we'll give you the hard copy sooner than that. So, um, I think in the years past, we've had them out, um, a day or two prior. Uh, so you have time for you to look over, look them over before 20.
Councilmember Kamiskas.
Yeah, and just, just for some history for, for Councilmembers Sawyer and Kurtz. Um, we, we found it very useful in the past several years to have these special meetings on the budget, where we can all come together during just a, a meeting, just concentrating on that topic, where we all bring our questions at one time, so we can kind of, it kind of turns into a little bit of a brainstorming session sometimes. In the past, um, before that, we had submitted, um, budget questions individually, um, and sometimes they were duplicate. Sometimes, you know, people weren't, and this goes back a while, but some people weren't reading the answers to the questions and, and asking it again, even though we already had the answer. So, um, it, it's a really good chance for us to sit down together, having had a couple of weeks to go through that budget and put together our questions, um, and going to learn from each other. So, um, this is kind of where that, that special meeting history comes from.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to move on to an update from Jocelyn, she has a few updates on the library.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, can you all hear me okay?
Ma'am.
All right, so, um, first, as you probably heard, the governor issued some new guidance, so I've printed that out so I can take a good hard look at it. So next steps will be forthcoming. Meanwhile, what we're currently doing, um, we are still doing our holds pickup service, that's going pretty darn well. Um, and then we, for September, did a number of take-and-go programs for people in addition to continuing our online storytimes. Um, we are doing, uh, the same thing in October. We will also have our first virtual trivia night on October 29th. So that'll be interesting to see how that turns out. Um, our new book bundle service, we have completed over 60 of those for our patrons since we started that. So that service is being greatly appreciated, which is wonderful. Um, I did send out a postcard about library services last week, you may have received it in the mail. So trying to get the word out about what we're still doing during our closure, especially for those people who were unable to access Facebook or social media, or simply prefer not to. We, um, the Friends of the Libraries donated children's room shelving arrived and has been installed. Um, after installing, we realized we needed a couple more units. So the room is still a work in progress, but the shelving looks really pretty. And we have moved most of our picture book collection into it. Um, and then, one thing that we are doing right now is, um, we are asking the community if they would like to share any recipes with us to create a community cookbook. Um, we do ask that the recipe is something that you've created yourself or have adapted from a different recipe, since we, per copyright, cannot link to other recipes or put in recipes from other people's cookbooks. Um, but we're hoping to get recipes from the community and then, um, print and bind a, um, cookbook that will add to the collection. And we're doing this in particular during this time because October is, um, National Cookbook Month, and it's Eat Better, Eat Together Month. So we thought, this just works. So those are a few of the things that the library is doing. Um, and then I also, um, attended a Kiwanis meeting, and, um, they have generously donated $500 to the Friends of the Library for us. So I wanted to give a shout out to Kiwanis because we truly appreciate that donation as well. That is all I have, unless there are any questions.
Okay, so moving along, I'll do a quick update on employee recruitment and then, um, touch on COVID items and that Jocelyn mentioned a little bit. So employee recruitment, we still are, um, looking for another maintenance worker that's being advertised. Uh, police chief lateral, please, excuse me, police officers, uh, we concluded interviews, and as the mayor said earlier, um, the best pool of candidates I've ever seen, a big long list of very qualified individuals. So offers are made in our pending background checks, et cetera. And then, uh, the police chief, as we know, that the open house is October 21st, um, interview is October 22nd and October 23rd. So with that note, I'm going to go, move down to COVID. Um, we did get an update about 5 o'clock this afternoon from Governor Inslee. He did extend public, the closing of public meetings through November 9th. So through November 9th, we still are required to have, um, remote, remote public meetings. Um, we also did receive some information that Jocelyn is studying relating to opening our library at about 25% capacity. There's a lot of steps that we have to be mindful of, and we have to make sure that we're following all of the guidelines that are, are included in his report. Today, we had a meeting with, uh, a virtual meeting with, uh, the Health District, and Dr. Love said, "We are having Halloween and Santa Claus is coming to town." Um, so I thought I'd pass that on, so as soon as we get the guidelines, we'll get those posted. But what I, whatever we wanted to know, that between Halloween and there's some guidelines that they're going to be recommending, and at Christmas, Santa Claus will be coming. So that's what he, he mentioned, he wasn't going to be the greatest this year. Um, canapes for outside dining have been distributed around town, and as Mayor Brinkham said, um, we've gotten some big thank you from some of our businesses that couldn't have handled, um, spending patron's bill, um, as the weather gets colder. So we have a few, a couple more to, one more to put up. And I did want to let council know that even though you wanted me to buy two more tents, I wasn't able to find two more tents. Um, they're hard to come by, and then just the delay in getting them kind of made it, um, challenging, so they were not available. So if we do need more tents, we may have to rent them. Um, but at this point in time, we're trying to make do with what, with the tents that were purchased. Um, masks for residents, last Friday, we handed out ma, a box of masks, uh, to our residents. This is, I think, is the third or fourth time we've done it. I just have to share with you the appreciation that our community has for that, and we're going to do it again on October 23rd. Um, on the CARE Act funding, so, as RJ mentioned, $495,000 has been allocated to our city based on our population. I'm going to let you know, we spent almost $200,000, not quite, but almost. Let me share with you what those, what that includes. Roughly $10,000 in public health expenses. That has to do with, uh, masks and sanitation, PPE and things, uh, to keep our, our, the, like, police departments. There was a quarantine situation that we had, um, business reopening, social distancing, and the like. And, and we have a lot more details if you want it. Um, approximately 30, a little over $38,000 in employees' expenses, and this has to do with paying our staff to clean our facilities, our parks, um, the farmer's market, our library, our police department, Trailhead. So we take that extra step to continually sanitize our facilities, um, to make the current guideline. So that was a little over $38,000. $8,000 in technology related to us having remote meetings, people working from home. Um, this, this supported, um, those activities, um, as well as security of our, of our software systems. Um, also then on COVID expenses, we spent $110,000 on fencing, signage, um, masks, tables, barricades. Uh, what's not included in that is almost $50,000 in canapes and tents. And then also, we are buying plumbing things so that we can have touchless sinks, touchless, um, toilets, touchless, um, paper towel dispensers. And all of those are in keeping with the guidelines of trying to open, once we get the green light, open our city hall, open our library, open our parks, then it will be more easy for us to have sanitary, sanitary protocols in place. So we're buying those things now. Um, we're kind of buying, seeing which ones we like, and then buying more. But we think that's a really good use of some of these dollars. So we have right now until the end of November to make these purchases. There, there's a, um, chance it could be extended, but we are very mindful of not wanting to waste money. We're trying to buy things that matter and things that will keep our community safe and support our business and open our facilities. I see a question from the mayor pro town.
Oh, no, no, not at all. I was just, I was just moving my pen.
Oh, okay. Um, so anyway, we're, I just have to give a big shout out to our entire crew, especially Jen and her team. Um, they are a kind of fulfillment center when we need to buy things, whether it's tables and chairs, barricade, tents, um, products, masks, sanitation, um, touchless toilet devices. Um, they just go to, go to town, buy those things, and it's just amazing, um, what a great job they've been doing.
Hey, I, real quick, I, I can't, uh, reinforce enough Katie's message. Our staff have been working extremely hard during this time, uh, spread thin, and doing everything they can to keep our community safe. Um, the hard work that's been put in across the board has been phenomenal. Um, with the most recent reports from the Health District, I forgot to mention earlier, uh, we are up to 193 cases per 100,000. Um, we've seen a spike in ages 20 to 29-year-olds, and that has now, uh, been the highest percentage of, because when you break down the age groups. Um, so we're going to continue to do everything we can to support our citizens and our local businesses. So thank you to all the staff, to include Katie, you guys have all been phenomenal.
Thank you. And then, um, on the next reservations and programs, to conclude my report, farmer's market, I believe, the last. And then on the next reservations and programs, to conclude my report, farmer's market, I believe, the last, excuse me, the last day is this coming Saturday. Skyhawk is still underway, and I don't buy those activities tonight. It's amazing how many of our little guys are out there, you know, boys and girls, playing sports, getting some fresh exercise. Library programs, that Jocelyn talked about is still underway. And then finally, Winter Glow, we're putting the finishing touches on the plan, and I'm not, actually Jen and her crew are. Two things I want to mention with that, they've identified November 21st as the opening for Winter Glow. We're not going to have vendors this year, it's going to be predominantly just a walk through. And the other thing I want to assure the council is, I have a conference call tomorrow with the Health District, and we're going to walk the Health District through what our, our event looks like, so that we can get the thumbs up and approval. They're going to give us some suggestions on what signs we need, what the signs need to say and all that. But, you know, our Health District has done a really good job advising us on some of these Chalk Walk and Winter Glow activities, because at the end of the day, we want to be consistent and compliant with what the regulations are. So Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, we are on to, oh, sorry, Mayor Protab.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie, back on employment recruitment, unfortunately, we no longer have Anita with us, who I think was just an outstanding individual for the city and everything she did for us. Are we in, we're going to be in a position to replace somebody in that capacity?
So we're still putting the finishing touches on our plan. I have some ideas that the mayor and RJ are going to talk about, a position. We hope to include that in the 2021 budget. But one of the things that we're hearing from, certainly our mayor is very engaged in the community. We also have a need for that coordination between our website, social media, our events, and so kind of that community engagement person. The outreach communication is key. So yes, we're looking at a position that is currently not filled.
Good, and that would be proposed, obviously, in our 2021 budget.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, and I, thank you for reminding me, Mayor Protab Candy. I do want to give a shout out, I know she's not on here, but I do want to give a shout out to Anita. She was an amazing staff member. She worked extremely hard, both in her role as a staff member and as a citizen, to really give back to the community. And she was an integral part, along with Thomas Alberg, on the success of the Chalk and Walk. So I can't thank her enough for everything that she's done for us, and we wish her the best in her retirement. She said she might call us back in a few months and decide she doesn't want to retire, but we wish her well in her retirement. Councilmember Forrester.
Just one last quick question, did we decide on November 10th for a budget workshop?
That's up to you, that was proposed by the Mayor Protab. I'm trying to think, if, we don't have to know right this minute, not tonight, but if you guys want to think about it, and then we could bring it back for discussion and confirmation at our next meeting, that's a thought.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kamiskas, I saw your hand pop up real quick. Nope, okay, Mayor Protab.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, when Katie and I were talking about that, and we come up with these proposed possible dates, the idea was that throw that out now, but then put it on the agenda for the 20th. I'm looking at the calendar here, for approval of that, that's kind of the idea. This would give the council and everybody involved staff to get some idea.
You know what we could do that could help, Councilmember Forrester, is we could put a budget calendar, RJ has the calendar of the sequence of what happens. We could send that out to you, and if those dates don't work, let us know. Our bullets accommodate people's schedules, so we'll do the best we can to put it together, and then if a date doesn't work, then we can bring it back for discussion on October 20th.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further questions or comments, action item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, action item, starting with consent agenda, make a motion to approve September 15th, 2020, City Council minutes.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Very good, thank you. Consent agenda to approve October 6th, 2020 vouchers in the amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamiskas, discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? General Business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, General Business, one, approve agreement with Ann McFarland for an online training workshop for elected officials.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reivers, any discussion? I hope not at this point. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Number two, approve coronavirus relief contract amendment A to provide additional funding to the city of Liberty Lake, the amount of hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reivers, discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Thank you, item number three, accept donation from Anita Garcia for the Liberty Lake Police Department flag.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reivers, discussion? Mayor Protab.
A comment, when this first came up, I was somewhat aware of something was being done, and of course, in our packet, there was no photograph, nothing that was in there. So I took the liberty to go over to the police department and look at it, not knowing what I was going to see. I was very hopeful that it was going to be completely great, and I have to say that is, in my opinion, it was beyond great. The professionalism that this has been done, and the quality of the material is absolutely outstanding. I encourage all City Councilmembers to make a special trip over there, visit the look at this flag. I think it's going to be incredible to be framed, is what they want to do, and hang it on the wall. It'll go really nice in the entryway there, thank you.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I just have it, thank you again, DG.
Number four, excuse me, accept donation from Coca-Cola Swire for the ten cases of energy drinks for Liberty Lake Police Department.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamiskas, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number five, authorize a total of seven thousand twelve dollars to remove striping on Knox Avenue, and authorize the mayor to sign the work order with Road Products Inc.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yeah, just a quick introduction, sorry, review of this project, the nature of the removed striping.
Certainly, so on Knox Avenue, currently, right now, there's a bike lane that is used for parking pretty often, and so to improve the safety for cyclists along there, we have a good opportunity that we can do parking, bike lane, and travel lane, and all we have to do is remove the striping that's currently out there. We've measured it all out, and then use our county contract to re-stripe it, but it should provide some more biking, parking, and bike lane access for folks.
Always excited to hear about improvements for pedestrians and cyclists, thanks.
Yeah, I think this is also going to help some businesses along that route, that have had challenges with some of their parking sizes. I know they're appreciated as well. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Item number six, approve task order number two zero two zero dash zero eight with parametrics, or design services for the legacy grid intersection signal in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reivers, discussion? Councilmember Forrester.
I have a question. As I've read over that Country Vista corridor analysis several times now, when we approved that recently, is it everybody's understanding that what they've recommended is what we're planning to do going forward? Or are we going to have a separate discussion regarding each individual, individual intersection, just curious?
When we're looking at the analysis, we're approving that, the analysis that they put together is basically, all the data that they've compiled together is what our plan is moving forward. But each individual project will need to be approved, and we can go through discussion and discuss the merits as businesses develop and land develops around there as well, and make sure it still works with that network analysis. So you're not approving just general signal design throughout the entire corridor, we have to do each one of those individually.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kamiskas, I saw your hand next.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I found, I figured out the question I was going to ask, so, yay me.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn.
So to reflect on Phil your question, now's the time, if we believe that that intersection is not, you know, the signalization there is not the right choice. That's my interpretation. We've acknowledged through a study that these are the recommended actions, but the operative moment is when we, as action council, spend to implement. So I have no objection to this particular signal.
If I could weigh in real quickly, because that's an intersection that I've been looking at for many, many years, trying to figure out what is the best solution there. And I'll just give you, because the analysis shows, Councilmember Forrester, that the signal was the better alternative than the postal roundabout. Although, we all love roundabouts because they process more cards and more efficient, a whole host of things. The geometry of Country Vista being basically a five-lane section, the amount of pedestrians that we're expecting with the high school and the development along that corridor really created the, I think, motivation to really look hard at putting a signal in there. Looking at the roundabout, a roundabout could work, the challenge you have is the corridor is just so wide, and the, what you'd like to do in roundabout studies is balance your trips going into and out, all four legs. So the recommendation was from our consultant was to put a traffic signal there, though we didn't take, though we looked at the roundabout idea. I don't know what you have in mind, but we came to the conclusion, that the engineers that did the analysis came to the conclusion, the best solution was a traffic signal. So that's kind of where we ended up, and that's what today would do, is be to award a contract and parametric to do that design.
Councilmember Reivers. I saw your hand up, I didn't want to, we'll see.
Did you say my name?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, it blanked out for a second. I was just going to reflect on Phil's question also, and I have a similar opinion to Councilmember Dunn, but Councilmember Forrester, my opinion is that that's a strong recommendation from a particular consultant, but I do think we should be looking at each separate project on their individually as we go. But it's a great recommendation, good, hard set of data with it, but I, for one, don't necessarily accept the opinion of just one consultant, that each project we should be looking at to make sure that it's still the right, right signaling or situation for that particular intersection. Though, for this one, Katie, I appreciate your comments, and I agree that based on the data out there, traffic signal seems to be the most appropriate.
Councilmember Forrester.
Yeah, don't, don't get me the wrong way, I'm, I'm certainly not questioning the report. I'm just look, I, I've struggled with this concept from day one. When I look at the overall corridor, as, especially now with the roundabouts over at Barker in place, those things move traffic. It's incredible. And all, I just, in the back of my mind, I say to myself, we're going to have a stoplight there, one at Henry, one at the school, probably another one somewhere in between the school and Henry, or what, I guess it's Kramer now, I'm sorry. What is that going to do to our traffic flow, I guess, is all in the back of my mind, I'm just thinking, wow, those roundabouts over at Barker work so well.
Yeah, so we, we did have a lot of discussion with this, with Lisa and Ben and the entire team, and we are going to be, yes, smart signal technology, so they're in sync with each other. In the best flow possible, but I wholeheartedly agree with that, Councilmember Dunn, Reivers, that we will look at the, as individual situations, not the whole corridor as they come up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
And the other thing that was part of the discussion in the presentations was pedestrian bike, pedestrian and bike safety as well, and that the lights provided the best opportunity for pedestrian safety through those corridors, which I think is a big, it has a huge impact with the high school going in there. But as things get developed on the other side of the street, whatever those may be, and whenever that happens, kids going across and with bikes and everything, golf carts, whatnot, it was the more safe way for cars to stop, given the width of the road and the speed of the road, from what I remember.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Okay, any further discussion? Not hearing, seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, once again, General Business, number seven, authorize a total of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents, instruct original high school traffic. Authorize mayor to sign a contract with Midland Electric after TIB approval, and, and Midland Electric.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reivers, discussion? Councilmember Forrester.
Yeah, just one thing I didn't see, and it was, when, when is the anticipated start?
That would actually be as soon, there's a contract window of roughly a week to get all the documents in place, and so we'd likely try to start that this year, deporing the bases and doing the boring and conduit work while they order the mast arms, since those are long lead time items. And then we would plan to finish the work in the spring, so do as much as we can with the weather window that we have in prep work, and then finish that out to, to really try to ensure that we get that open for the high school.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Thank you, number eight, approve transportation improvement board consultant supplemental agreement, the man in the original contract from fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty-four cents, to sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-two cents, to include construction support services, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamiskas, discussion? Councilmember Forrester.
Yeah, sorry, so to read through the documents, I'm just trying to understand, or help you understand, what the purpose of the law is as far, I understand it's for consulting. The consultant will complete the work on an hourly basis and will answer questions from the city when asked, but it's a fixed amount.
Yeah, so basically, this is engineer of record support. So signal engineering is a complex art in and of itself, the cabinets, the diagrams, the phasing, all the timing. Well, I understand in depth the general principles behind that, there are specific submittals for cabinets, for particular conduits and wire sizes, that I just want to ensure that the signal, this is kind of lessons learned from past projects, ensuring that we're, we're getting support to place the correct materials and items in there during construction. So the contractor will submit submittals to us, I can certainly review most of the sidewalk, the pavement, I can. most of the sidewalk, the pavement, I can review a lot of it, but just to make sure that we're getting the correct product in there that matches those plans and specs, that's what their construction support is for, and that's actually what we had requested in the TIB funds was construction support during this phase. I just don't think we've utilized it in the same way in the past that we have now. So we're still within the budget that we're targeting, but I just wanted to make sure that we had that professional engineer of record construction support and used it as minimally as possible, but for specific submittals.
I understand that. So somewhere here, maybe I've missed it, is the not to exceed number?
Correct.
Okay. Is it in this document?
Um.
You can understand my question, it's a fixed number, but get us an hourly basis.
Yes, it should be hourly not to exceed.
Not to exceed, okay. Now, my other question, thank you for that. And then my last question on that is under extra services, it says it's not covered, what's the likelihood that we would need their service of these items that are listed?
So the project man, it's really low. The project management aspect of it, tracking quantities, all that budgetary item and support, setting up pre-cons and all those things, like I feel very comfortable handling that, and I don't think we'll need any additional support. It's mainly just for the submittal review.
Your hand.
Correct, to save as much money on the product as we can.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Dunn?
Super quick, Ben, when this guy goes to press, could you share a line of sight check on those boxes?
That was the first lesson learned that the mayor talked with me about, it was like literally hours after I started.
Job interview?
Very well said, Councilmember Dunn.
Oh, I tell you, very good, very good.
All right, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
General business nine, remove the denim to Kalinki's lease agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Receivers, discussion? Mayor Portem?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, more of a comment. Quite often, we're over there having dinner or drink or something like that on the deck, the owner comes out, we're always visiting, we've known each other for a long period of time, he's always pleased that we're extending the lease, but at the same time, that he's always concerned also, is that when is, when's, what's gonna happen with that facility? So I'm always telling him, is that, you know, there's, it's in the process, it just takes time. So on one hand, he's very pleased to be there, he's pleased that it's moving forward, but at the same time, he says, you know, for six months, he has to always sweat what's gonna happen. Just a, just a general comment.
Well, I think that's one of the things that, because there was discussions in the past of doing month to month, and, you know, we want to make that fair to him and his family, and that's why I think it's valuable to do the six-month versus a month-to-month.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Dunn, I think I saw your hand. You're not, no, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number ten, approved purchase of DIs for snow services, the amount not to exceed the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Receivers, discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number eleven, approved purchase of granular salt for snow removal services in amount of not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
Here's to the La Niña winter, bring it on.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it.
Last item, number twelve, authorize a total of twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, eighty-eight cents to purchase water and sewer taps for Public Works Yard and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District for tap purchase once plans are approved.
Second. Second.
Second by Councilmember Kurtz, discussion? Councilmember Forrester?
Just a quick question, I'm curious as to the need for a one-inch meter and a three-quarter inch meter separate for irrigation, is there that much area to irrigate over there?
Yes, for the rest of the hillside, as well as to help service some of the vehicles too, for, for general yard use around, that's, that's what we're, we were kind of targeting, was to get a big meter as we could, or as big of a service line for irrigation as we could to help with some of those maintenance.
May I?
Yeah, sorry.
So, so they're looking to fill trucks with water in case they have to, to do anything with a water truck. So they need that extra size.
If you get the backfield better, thank you.
Mayor Portem?
Yeah, question for clarification, can you explain to me, what, what is the, the actual water and sewer tap? Is that the device that comes out of the ground?
So there, there's actually an extension of the, the water line that needs, so there's a twelve-inch main across the street that we need to extend across the roadway. So the tap is actually the fee for that particular size of water service that you need. So the, the tap is a tiered rate system, it's, it's, yeah, it's essentially the, the physical, the rate for the physical tap to get into the line, but the construction costs are separate from that, the, the actual physical components are separate, this is just the rate, basically classification that we're buying.
Yeah, I was trying to visualize, visualize what is actually the tap, so thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, or read in?
Ordinance number two-six-four-D, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, in order to permitting ordinance number two-six-four passed by the city council on December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, entitled, in ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand twenty through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established positions.
RJ, any need to bump this to a second read?
So that is the recommendation, since we've already approved the contract of commerce earlier, is to also recognize the revenue and the expenditure for this item. So staff does recommend suspending the rules, making this a second read, go ahead and posting it, and then we're, we're all completed with the process.
Councilmember Comiscus?
Yeah, I make, I move to suspend the rules to move, move ordinance two-six-seven-D to second read.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Receivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yep.
Mayor Jack?
Yes, sir.
Did I miss the, sorry, I had on mute, but was there a suspension of the rules?
Yes, that was the motion.
Okay, I just missed, or said, thank you.
Yes, sir. Second read in?
Ordinance number two-six-four-D, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, in ordinance permitting ordinance number two-six-four passed by the city council on December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, entitled, in ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand twenty through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established positions.
Any motion?
Motion?
New ordinance number two-six-seven-D.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Comiscus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Citizen comments?
Yep, I was getting to that too, sorry about that. Any citizen comments regarding this? Not hearing any, seeing any? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have the mayor's presentation of the mayor's budget for two thousand twenty-one, a public hearing on the budget. We also have a desire to award the Internet and Voltris contract that are currently being evaluated. There's a potential that we're gonna have some COVID purchases, I don't know exactly what those are, but we're working to get some pricing to purchase some plumbing devices, I'll say. And then finally, don't have a lot of extra information at this time, but we do have a mower that's experiencing some problems, and so we want to get it repaired, and so we're evaluating a contract to, to get the mower repaired at this time. So we're still working on that, I don't have any numbers or anything, but that's what we have in store for October twentieth.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Um, is now an appropriate time to ask about adding something to an upcoming agenda, whether it's the next one or the week after? Term limits, a discussion whether that's in a workshop or in our regular meeting?
If you feel, if you feel able to take action on it, I would encourage that we make sure it's added to the agenda to take action. Okay?
Yeah, I might advise Councilmember Kurtz, if you want to get that on the agenda, as part of that discussion maybe includes, see if we can get some information from MRS regarding what other jurisdictions in the area do as well, then we can learn a lot from that.
Mayor Portem?
Yeah, my recommendation would be is that that type of discussion would be in our, in our seven o'clock meeting.
Yeah, I would agree to that, if you, especially if you guys feel like you're gonna want to take action on it.
As far as action goes, I mean, is that, would that be essentially doing a new ordinance for resolution?
Yeah.
We wouldn't be able to actually affect it that night, but we would make a recommendation for drafting it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything further, Councilmember Forrester?
Yeah, so I guess this is a good time to request that I'd be able to make my motion from the six o'clock meeting tonight regarding rooftop units and lighting for the police department.
Yes, we can add that as well.
Thank you.
Anything, Mayor Portem?
Yes, in moving forward, what I'd really like to see is that what happens was under TBD, there's a lot, there's different things get added here, and they just seem to never get off. And a good example, what always jumps out at me is the discussion of C2 zoning for Hub Sports Center. It's my understanding, we already had that discussion, and what it was left at is that he was gonna go back to his board of directors and see where they wanted to go from there. Well, I'm a little confused why we would still have that on there. It's not up to us to bring that up. If he wants to bring it back to us, that'd be his responsibility.
Have you heard anything further from him, Katie, regarding that?
I haven't received an update. We don't have to track it, I mean, we can take it off, and then if it's initiated by the Hub Board, we can bring it back. But you're right, there is no county council decision at this time.
I'd recommend that we reach out to him and see if he has any updates. Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always envision the TBD where council members can bring up something like Councilmember Kurtz just did, is that I would like to, if she was to say, I'd like to have such and such put on at a future meeting, that's a great place for that to go, because then it's first and foremost that this has been brought up, and it would be scheduled at some future meeting.
Okay.
I see great value with the TBD, it's just I think we need to police it and keep it clean from time to time. Thank you.
Okay, next up is citizen comments. I know we have a citizen comment from Ellen Williams. Todd, if you can unmute her?
Would you like me to start my video, so then you can?
I like the background.
Do you want me to go ahead now? I'm sorry, I've been here with you since six, isn't that amazing? Crazy. First of all, thank you so much for all of your dedication and hard work. I am amazed at all you have to discuss and think about. I was really invited to come to the meeting because there was a wild rumor floating around about property on the Legacy Ridge Hill. And the reason why I am just making any kind of comment is, as I said earlier, to provoke you to be as transparent and open about this potential sale of twenty-three acres to make forty-seven possible homes. I, we've heard rumors from time to time, and not really sure how transparent or not transparent this is. By the way, I live in Legacy Ridge, so that's why you see my face. Anytime there's something to do with Legacy Ridge, you'll see my face. And I just wanted to encourage you as much as possible, possible to be transparent, to be open, and help us all to come to a common decision. I know in politics, nobody's totally happy, but I think if we can come to an understanding together, it will leave us all in much, much better shape. And that's my only plea to you folks.
Absolutely, thank you. We appreciate your comments. Thank you for sticking in there with us for this meeting. All right, any further citizen comments? You can, yeah, go ahead.
City clerk, here I am, receive another citizen comment that I'd like to read into the record?
Please.
Liberty Lake has done well adding green space within the city. I'm so disturbed to hear that the council has voted to sell a conservation property of twenty-three acres on Legacy Hill. This is a mistake. Many residents enjoy that trail. On our walk along the hill a few years ago, we saw city employees marking a few trails. There is plenty of room to mix and trail within the twenty-three acres. Please don't give up on getting the easements. This is our best option and should be pursued longer. And the traffic, you don't need all the traffic development we need to Liberty Lake Road. Please don't sell this property. Margaret Bidmore.
All right, thank you. Any other citizen comments? Okay, not hearing any, we're going into executive session. How long, you think, Katie?
Twenty minutes. We have two attorneys and ourselves, as well as council members.
Okay, so we will start the executive, executive session at nine fifteen, no action to be taken, and then we will adjourn the meeting, so we'll see you at nine fifteen for the council. Thank you.